Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. This public hearing sponsored by the Committee on Guam, U.S. Military Relocation, Veterans Affairs, Homeland Security, and Judiciary is hereby called to convene today, Tuesday, January fourteenth, at nine a.m. Just for the information of the public, the items that are on the agenda are Bill number two forty-two dash three-two C O R, an act relative to amending the Guam Code annotated in reference to the crime of indecent exposure, and Bill number two forty-seven dash three-two C O R, an act relative to expanding the Guam Slayer statute that will prohibit inheritance by a person who murdered someone from whom he or she intends to inherit. For the information of the public, notification went out to the stakeholders and to all the senators on January third, that was the initial publication, and notices were sent out. And then subsequent to that, in compliance with the open government law, on January ninth, second public hearing notice was forwarded to all the stakeholders inclusive of the senators. And the printing was published on January sixth, Monday, the initial printing, and then subsequent was on January ninth. So, those are in compliance with the requirements. Other than that, just a caveat to our discussion today, because traditionally we would provide a timeline of ten days for the public to provide written testimony subsequent to the public hearing, but because there's an anticipation for session to be scheduled to commence on the week of the twenty-seventh of January, I would like to request that should the sponsors of either of the two proposals want to have the bill placed on the agenda, that all written testimony be submitted no later than twelve noon on Tuesday, January twenty-first. That would give the committee ample time to be able to finalize the report and to submit it within the timelines required by the committee and rules. So, without any further ado, I'd like to invite Mr. Jacob Cruz and also Mr. Phil Taidinko from the A.G.'s office to the table. And prior to receiving testimony, I'd like to recognize my colleague Senator Brian McCready for joining us today. And also, if you would like to say a few words with regards to the first legislation in reference to crime of indecent exposure. Senator McCready as a sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for allowing me to speak and holding a public hearing for the bill. Bill two forty-two thirty-two was introduced after hearings, some concerns from Guam Police Department. Under the current statute, police officers can arrest, cannot, can arrest individuals for indecent exposure only if themselves witness the crime. Under this bill, the penalty for indecent exposure increases from a petty misdemeanor to a misdemeanor, and it makes it a felony if the individual exposes himself to a minor or has prior sex crime convictions. Now, based on the statistics I've received from GPD, there are about twenty-six arrest cases total from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and thirteen. So it is my goal not to just curb this indecent exposure problem, but to end it from ever happening again. Indecent exposure is not a big problem, but nonetheless, it is a problem. The intent of this bill is to increase the penalty so that GPD can better perform its jobs. This bill will help keep the small problem from growing into a big problem. And with that, I'd like to thank you once again, Mr. Chairman, and I look for a positive response from our Attorney General's Office.
Thank you very much, Senator McCready. And to begin with, those individuals that have signed in the order of signing, we're gonna allow Mr. Jacob Cruz to provide oral testimony, and then we'll share the podium with Mr. Taidinko. Mr. Cruz?
Buenos dias, Senator. I'm here to provide testimony on Bill two forty-two. Um, and, um, and here's our bill, two forty-two. Um, I think it's a good bill. I could leave a glance through it this morning. Um, and I commend Senator McCready for, um, putting this piece of legislation into, into, um, crafting this, uh, legislation.
This is my senior, Mr. Cruz, for the, for the tomopag, and for your comments. Mr. Taidinko, please identify yourself for the record and proceed.
Buenos dias, Senator. Chairman, Senator Frank.
I apologize, uh, Chief or Deputy Attorney General, but let me just go ahead and recognize the presence of one of my other colleagues, Senator Chris Duenez. Thank you very much, Senator, for joining us this morning.
Good morning again. I always defer to my fellow parishioner there, Chris Duenez. So, um, and also, good morning to the author of this bill, Senator Brad McCready, on behalf of Attorney General, uh, Leonardo Rapadares, and myself, Chief Deputy Phil Taidinko. We support, uh, Bill two forty-three dash thirty-two, which looks disjointed in the indecent exposure statute, uh, you know, increasing the penalty from a petty misdemeanor to a misdemeanor. I also noticed that you're also increasing, um, the penalty if convicted for up to a third degree felony if this person does this to someone under the age of sixteen, or if they do it for purposes of sexual gratification, or they have a prior conviction, or they've been convicted of any other prior, uh, sex offense. And, um, uh, again, I would, um, you know, on its face, I know the intent of the bill is meant to, uh, curb the, uh, that conduct or behavior which is, uh, offensive and alarming to the public and to folks, although I would, um, I would submit though that, um, uh, there will be challenges, I anticipate, and so I, we support the bill and the intent, but, you know, the twenty-first century, I mean, I have to share this observation, there are, uh, our social mores are a lot more looser, and with technology, it will present some challenges when some folks, uh, decide to press charges against other people because they, and I know we have text, we have a sex texting statute already, but, but as you know, um, there's a, there's a lot more, um, going on there, and increasing it to a felony will, will find ourselves being challenged more, but be that as it may, it sounds like that there's a need for this, so we support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Taidinko. Just one particular question, I guess, in regards to this, I think it's always, uh, noble to move in the direction of making sure that crimes are as much, are stiff enough in terms of trying to discourage any illegal activities out there. My biggest concern is looking at the resources that have been provided to you by this legislature. I know that just in the last three, four years, that every single year, you've seen a modest incremental adjustment in the overall allocation to your, to the Attorney General's Office. But this really should not impact your resources because it's more or less increasing the penalties rather than imposing additional job or work or responsibilities. Is that almost a correct assessment?
Well, at least based on reported numbers, yeah, it shouldn't. And I'm not putting that testimony before the, before this body. I, I, I just anticipating based on, whenever you increase penalties, you have to expect pushback when you look at the hierarchy of, uh, of what the criminal justice system faces, you know, they, and with the, and the criminal justice system is not just simply the police and the prosecutors. It's not like law and order, just those two groups. There's actually other groups like DOC, there's pressures there, and, and the courts are another, are another, uh, body or organization that's in the criminal justice system, and so, uh, in the hierarchy of prioritizing who should be getting jailed, who should be locked up longer and all of that, this is, I'm just simply pointing out that this will complicate matters, and when you do put stiffer penalties, you should expect, uh, stiffer, uh, pushback, especially when, uh, courts and, and defense attorneys are saying, well, you know, that's indecent exposure, I really wanna put the, you know, I understand the prosecutors pushing for more jail for the rapists, but why are you pushing for felony on, on something like this, especially like, like, for example, if it happens in a, in a concert and a boyfriend-girlfriend breakup? Well, again, those are things that the courts will just have to sort out. Again, I know that the intent here is for those, for those folks that, um, are, um, less controlling of their impulses and so forth, so, um, and for decent folks not to be offended by that. So, I, I'm just simply pointing that out, it's, it's a factor, it's great to, uh, to strengthen our laws, but at the same time, there's, there are potential consequences, and that's all I'm raising. I'm not trying to claim an impact issue, even though there, there will be impact, it's just not, probably not in the magnitude, and so I, I would agree with you, Senator.
I think, Mr. Taidinko, I believe you're right in terms of this is not just an issue affected GPD as well as the Attorney General's Office or the judicial system, it's really a community issue. And anytime that we move in the direction of trying to stiffen up the laws, we always need to look at implications. I mean, we stiffen up the laws on one end, but does it result in discouraging any criminal activities because of how stiff the laws are? I mean, because it all goes back to providing the resources from the ground level, whether it be the mayors, so that they can provide opportunities and activities within the village, and then moving on to GPD, providing them additional resources, providing an office, and likewise with the judicial system. So you're absolutely right in terms of looking at it from a community perspective, because it is a public safety issue, so I appreciate your.
Yeah, and I think I was just also hinting at that, and I, I feel like I sound like my parents, because they, they thought that when we were young, we were all indecent too, but you know, the promiscuity and exposure of, of people self to each other in many venues and events is, is a lot more different in this century than it was in the late twentieth century, so I'm, I'm simply saying that, that, you know, that we have to factor that in, because that comes into play.
Thank you very much, Mr. Taidinko. I'd like to welcome our speaker, Senator, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for joining us this morning. Senator McCready?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and you're, you're hitting it right on the nose there, it's not a huge problem. Uh, this is a problem that, uh, when I spoke to some of the stakeholders at GPD, they, they were in agreements that, not a huge problem, but a problem that if we, if we kinda catch it early, like we're doing now, and, and increase these penalties to allow them to arrest somebody, because right now, as, as it stands, they have to witness it themselves to, to be able to arrest these, these individuals. And I think in two thousand and twelve, there were sixteen cases, and, and in two thousand and thirteen, it went down by ten. So, so my whole intent to this bill is, is, is not just to curb it, but to eliminate it. So if we can go from sixteen to ten to five, and then maybe in two thousand and fifteen to zero, I think we've done what, what, what the intent of the bill was. So, so I'm, I'm happy that you, you support it, and, and the good senator to my right, the chairman of the committee, brought it up about the revenue and, and how it's gonna cost the, the department, and, and, you know, I'm happy that it's, it's not gonna be a huge burden on you guys. And so, um, uh, thank you for your testimony, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Senator McCready. Senator Duenez, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Deputy General. I catch you in terms of our Sunday ritual. Nice to see you every Sunday. Um, I don't, I don't think or presume that this is, um, something that the Attorney General's Office or, or any other, um, you know, a group that would look at how the law is charged. Is there intent at the outset? But doesn't, uh, legislation such as this, when you move the bar up, especially with a possible emerging issue, give you, uh, more of a tool, an additional tool in the toolbox, if you will, in terms of, uh, working on your caseload, uh, to, to maybe plead down, um, whereas there was nowhere to go in the past if, if this becomes an emerging issue as sometimes we see in the media and, and, and something, you know, that, that could be offensive, particularly since Senator McCready is also working on issues with regard to our visitor industry. I know this type of activity, uh, and this type of lewd behavior has been noted several times, even against tourists, um, like at Micronesia Mall. I know there was a couple cases where these kind of things have happened, and, you know, it just, it's an image issue for us, right? And so, if the message is out there that, that there's a, um, a much larger penalty, and then, you know, more flexibility with the office, does, does that help?
Uh, yes, it does.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just kinda wanted to bring that up, knowing that the resources and other resources are stretched a ton. However, um, I think sometimes when we set the bar higher, what we set ourselves up for is the ability to, um, you know, create a deterrent and also add other opportunities. So I thank you, uh, for the chance to speak on this issue.
Thank you very much, Senator Duenez. Speaker, any comments?
Yep, I'm just curious, has GPD invited to this, and can we get a statement from?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay. You know, 'cause, I mean, if, if we, and, and do we have any reason why we've reduced it without any addition to the law, why it's been reduced from twelve to ten? I know, Senator McCready, you had mentioned, you said in two thousand and twelve, there were sixteen cases? And without any amendment to the law, it reduced, it was reduced to ten? Okay. Um, is, is it accurate to say that in order to charge this crime or to make an arrest, the police officer has to witness it? Mr. Attorney General?
You know, I, I believe the good senator reported that that was a GPD, uh, information that they provided, and, uh, I don't think the officer has to. If I'm, if I, if it was exposed to me and I report it, then the officer can decide whether I'm credible and, you know, and then make that arrest, and, um, uh, I, I was sorta hinting at, so, so there, there could be circumstances where it would make sense that a police officer, uh, witnessed it, because if the person or the tourist describes it in a, in a, in a, in such a vague or neutral way, ambiguous way, then he probably would wanna witness it, because, you know, what is, you know, is he like dropping his pants and all we see is his underwear, and you're offended versus, uh, actually exposing his genitals and dropping his pants and his underwear, or, or flashers? So, it, it depends on the facts. So I, I don't know what the GPD's experience is on this, so we'd have to ask them. Uh, so I, I would say that it certainly helps, because as, as I understand these circumstances, they're, you know, that's probably still going on, but it, it may be in the way it was described and reported to the police, I, I don't know, I can't really help you there, Senator, but I would say, no, if I saw your genitals and offended me or alarmed me, and it's in public, then that should be sufficient to cause an arrest, and I, I don't know why, uh, GPD would say that.
Maybe we can get some clarification. Okay, okay. Um, if in fact this is a deterrent, would it be more of a deterrent if we made it a first degree felony?
Uh, yes and no. Um, you know, that's, that's extremely high for this type of conduct. I mean, if you try to look at the hierarchy of, uh, of offensive, I'm gonna call it offensive sexual conduct, uh, I would say that we have other more offensive sexual conduct that's not even first degree, so, and, and I, and I would submit that these folks who are engaged in this may have, um, maybe likely candidates for the mental health court, and so, whether it's first degree or third degree is probably not as impactful. So I, I, I would say that third degree is probably sufficient, I think first degree would be, um, no pun intended, but overexposure of the penalty.
Okay, I'll stop there. Thank you.
By the way, I was turning my orange juice around.
I know.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Gentlemen, thank you for your testimony this morning. If I can ask you both to please just remain in the seat and invite Mr. Don Clark for the next proposal. Uh, the bill is Bill number two forty-seven dash three-two C O R, an act relative to expanding the Guam Slayer statute that will prohibit inheritance by a person who murders someone from whom he or she stands to inherit. Mr. Clark, if you can please join us at the table? And we can go ahead and begin with Mr. Jacob Cruz. Please identify yourself for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Buenos dias, Senator. Senator. Uh, Buenos. Buenos. And here again to, um, this is part of Bill, um, two forty-seven dash thirty-two. Um, relative to this handling, the Guam Slayer statute that will prohibit inheritance by persons who murdered someone from whom he or she stands to inherit, due to, you know, the, and, and such, since, uh, one eight, one nine, uh, chapter eight, title fifteen, Guam Code annotated. So, Senator, I just wanted to say that, um, uh, I think this is a great deal, um, and I can't, I can't wait for it to, um, be hung up, and hopefully, um, that you support the other colleagues, um, will be, uh, the history of Guam, this is one.
This is my senior, Mr. Cruz, for your testimony this morning. Mr. A.G.? Okay, Mr. Clark, he's yielding to you. You may proceed, just identify yourself for the record.
Good morning, uh, honorable senators. My name is Don Clark, I'm Executive Vice President for ASC Trust Corporation, and I just wanted to come here and, and thank you very much for, um, expanding on this Slayer statute. Uh, as you all know, we run retirement plans and benefit plans for most of the companies out here in Guam, and so this is a, uh, this is a, a great law that will help those who, uh, that unfortunately, um, as participants of retirement plans, IRAs, or other types of programs, if they are, uh, killed by one of their beneficiaries, that, uh, those beneficiaries that are convicted will not be entitled to the benefits that, uh, those participants have worked hard for and have saved for, uh, for their lives, and it will go to those who are in more need. So it was, uh, interesting that the prior, or the original Slayer statute did not extend far enough, so it's good that you're expanding this to include these retirement plans and other benefit programs, so that, uh, there will, there will be justice in that. And so that's all I wanted to say, thank you very much.
Mr. Clark, you're Attorney by trade?
No, that's my brother.
That's your brother? Okay, okay, I was just gonna ask a general question as it applies to, uh, to how the court would interpret existing statutes, but only because of some of the research that was done by my office, but.
Existing statutes?
I'll perhaps present that to the A.G. All right? Mr. Taidinko, please.
I prefer that.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Uh, good morning again, Chairman, again Senator Paganing, Senator McCready, and Senator Duenez. Phil Taidinko on behalf of Attorney General Rapadares, Office Attorney General. Of course, we, um, we support, uh, improving the Guam Slayer statute. Obviously, there, there are sound, uh, moral and community, uh, reasons for, and policies for having such a statute. We should not be rewarding someone that's, uh, causing the death of another person via murder or manslaughter, uh, and then, and then tries to profit from it through insurance or through the estate, which can frequently be a motive in such cases. Uh, what I'd like to input, and again, I only reviewed it recently, is more of a technical and would, um, request for a little, um, markup meeting. Um, like, for example, I, I, I think, uh, the first thing that stood out on line seven of first page says, "No person convicted of the murder or voluntary manslaughter." We don't really have a statute called voluntary manslaughter, so we'd have to clean that language up. We'd probably say, "No person convicted of murder or manslaughter in a, uh, under nine GCA, section sixteen point, I don't know, I forget, ten, twenty." You know what I mean? We have the different, sixteen point ten, twenty, and thirty, I guess, uh, cover those different forms of murder and manslaughter, so that would be much more accurate, right? And so if we do that, then we'd have to, um, make it consistent wherever it says unlawfully intentionally, because manslaughter is not intentional, right? Manslaughter is recklessly causing death, cha- uh, is the general mens reas or mental element. So for wherever it says that, um, we should probably make that consistent, wherever it's the, you know, the phrase throughout here, you know, in each section, "Who unlawfully intentionally kills?" Who unlawfully intentionally, because we have to just sort of clean that out throughout the bill. Um, and, uh, uh, another suggestion is, I know we, it uses the term killer, perhaps we should just replace that with slayer, since the title is slayer. Just a form issue, but killer's fine, but I mean, slayer, uh, is probably a better replacement word, because I notice we have the word killer throughout it, so, um, uh, and so those are just more of, uh, otherwise, it's, it's fine, I just wanted to go through the technical parts to make it consistent with the, uh, because it's anybody who's convicted of these crimes, so we should track all the language of our, of those crimes that you get convicted of, and so, um, and then I think it'll be, be fine, otherwise you'll find someone saying, "Well, you know, I, yeah, I did, um, recklessly kill that person, but I still can inherit." I mean, I would, I, you could still inherit under this statute, because it says unlawfully and intentionally, and manslaughter's not unlawfully and intentionally. So, just sort of pointed out. Otherwise, uh, support the statute, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Attorney General. Just for the, for your, uh, preview, sub item one is what is in the existing code, and, and that's, and I really appreciate your, your comments in terms of trying to clean up the code, and then the other sections are, are trying to, the intent is to expand it and be more inclusive in terms of any other, uh, activities that may be taking place after that individual inherits or assets. So I appreciate your testimony this morning. Uh, any comments? Speaker, any?
Yeah, um, Mr. Attorney General, when you say, um, just kinda curious, when you say slayer, if I hired somebody else and I didn't commit a physical act of slaying that person, am I the slayer?
Well, uh, yes, in a sense, because of, under our, well, again, if we clean this up, because it says procuring, and we would probably change it to soliciting. Our statute uses soliciting. You, you know, like when we convict you of, uh, like, for example, I hire someone to kill someone, because I wanna get the money.
Right.
We, we, we charge that person with conspiracy and solicitation.
So would this override all other laws, reference, for example, uh, uh, the operation of, uh, inheritance through marriage? You know, the husband's entitled fifty percent of the estate, would that negate all that? And it's, we're not just talking about insurance policies and, and retirement funds, we're talking about all other assets of the person that is, has been, uh, killed?
If I understand your question, uh, okay, so community property, if, if, uh, the way I understand the statute, how Slayer statute is supposed to work, by the way, whether it's killer or slayer, if you're the solicitor or procure, you're still the same person.
Okay.
Um, uh, but getting back to your question is a little complicated, this is off the top of my head, so without research. Uh, the, the purpose of the statute is you're not to profit from causing, from intentionally causing someone's death, because you're trying to get insurance money out of their estate. You asked a community property question, so I'm not a, I'm not a domestic attorney, but I, I would imagine that the estate of, of that person, um, you would not be entitled to whatever portion of that, of your wife's estate that you would, if you're, if you caused her death, you murdered her.
So it's not only, and, uh, this would not only cover those in which you are a named beneficiary, for example? So even if you were just to inherit by operation of law, you would still then, under this statute, not be entitled to that?
Well, it covers, well, it, it, let me see, we got insurance, seems, it says, to my chance, it seems to cover real property. Um, you know, it gets a little bit more complicated, you know, because you threw the community property part of it, I mean, ver- uh, versus, um, um, property that's outside the, uh, you know, many folks bring prop, or.
Property.
Have property that is not part of the marriage, you know, like, I inherited, separate and apart from the marriage, so, before or after, so, so, but the bottom line is whatever you would have inherited by virtue of that marriage or by virtue of the, uh, legal document, you know, if you have a, uh, joint tenancy on your, on the property, because you bought it together, or you have an account, joint tenancy, and usually there's a right of survivorship, that means, you know, last person standing, right, the survivor. Under this law, you would, you would lose your right to it. Now, now, something you have separate and apart that became community property, that's a lot more technical question. I wouldn't have qualified to answer at this time, you know, something that I bring into the marriage is a little bit different, different scenario, and that's usually in real property, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Senator McCready?
I just have a question, um, is, is this a huge problem on Guam? Do you, is it on the rise? And, and I know we have a recent, uh, case where if you just read the paper and listen to the media, um, um, you think it's, you know, kinda touching on what we're talking about today, so do you think this is a problem? And, and when it goes through the process, uh, what type And, and when it goes through the process, uh, what type of process does it have to go through again? So, you, you, you already have this, we're already gonna have this Slayer law in place. Um, then what process does it go through after this? When, when this, when, when a crime is committed for this law that we're talking about today? Is there a process that it goes through, or will this law supersede that process?
I, I'm not sure I understand your question, Senator, but if, if you're con- the process is, if you're convicted,
Yes.
you will not inherit.
Not anything.
If you're facing charges, it depends on the insurance. Like, for, in the insurance property context, and I'm sure Mr. Clark could probably answer that better than I can. I'm, they have their own set of policies and procedures about how long they'll, they'll not act on it under the certain, under certain circumstances. So, I couldn't answer that question specifically, that process. But, but the, uh, you know, probate gets tied up because other heirs will tie it up and say, hey, you better not.
That's where I was going to.
You better not give it to that guy because Lanny's in jail or he's, he killed my mom.
Could he, could he still tie up the process? This person, he or she tie up the process?
Uh, yeah, it's, you know, the challenge is there, but, you know, he or she's probably in jail, so the heirs are pushing through whatever they need to push through. I mean, that's a separate, you know, probate's a separate matter and criminal court's a separate matter.
But even with this law in place, they could still?
This law actually helps those heirs who are claiming that this person, um, unlawfully caused the death of the, of the, of the deceit, of the, um, testator or the, um, intestate. You know, it's the person who died and has the estate, so, um, I haven't touched bills since law school, so, it's not my dollywag.
Thank you, Senator McCready, Senator Duñez. Any questions?
Just to follow up on that, that line of questioning from Senator McCready. Uh, from the insurance perspective, if someone is going through the judicial system and is being prosecuted, how would your company, as an example, handle a situation like that as it applies to this provision? If this particular provision was passed into law?
Uh, everything just freezes. Everything freezes. Everything is put on hold until a decision is made whether he's guilty or not. And then at that point, and the, the benefit will be paid out. So, as, uh, for the retirement plans, we are trustees of those, uh, uh, accounts and the, the money. So, it is our fiduciary responsibility is to just wait until a decision is finally made. Um, and if we see, so if, i- it, you know, in an, in an estate case, generally, as you're saying, the heirs will come forward and put a stop to, uh, any benefit payments that, uh, may be awarded. But, and, and in this case here, if, if nobody steps forward and we are aware or if the employer, uh, that we're managing the plan for is, uh, suspects anything, then it is our fiduciary responsibility to look further, to hold everything until it is, uh, something is decided one way or the other in that case.
Thank you very much for your responsibility. Mr. Cruz, Mr. Clark, and, uh, Mr. Attorney General, thank you very much for your testimony this morning. Senators, thank you for joining us. Once again, I'd like to please remind the public that, uh, because the sponsors of this, of these two legislative measures may desire to place it on the agenda, which is scheduled for the week of the twenty-seventh, that, uh, the committee receive any additional testimony written, uh, no later than twelve P M. on Tuesday, January twenty-first. So, that's a week from today, and then the committee will be closing out the committee report. Uh, thereupon, this public hearing is hereby adjourned. Thank you.